Wish to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. I thought your wife told you not to do this anymore, Marv.
Mayor Tom, my lovely man, hello everyone, greetings, praise the Lord. We saw you walk in your hound earlier today and I yelled from my car, "Hello hero," you heard me, didn't you? And you said, "See me tonight."
And I am, I see you tonight.
There's something maybe on the agenda, but I think maybe... I had...I was eating supper, I didn't want the gravy to get on my necktie. About the position, and you're going to deal with that, but excuse me because I may not have any other input, but now... My wife, Becky Rapinski, chaired the library board for several years. She is among many of the workers and citizens related to the city who feel that a new director to take the place that was served by Jim Herm might be important. And I just want to say to this group, I spent a good hour with Jim and his wife some time ago in his home. He's a good man, and I want this board to know that. I've spent hours with him when I chaired the HRA board. And I was sometimes blamed for him moving out of that position and then consequently, I think with that movement, he was asked to come off his position as city administrator. But I want us to treat him and his legacy with some respect, I do. He was given a dual position, as you know, and that's where I'm kind of going beyond the right of my speaking, but thank you, I'll take the right. He was hired to be city administrator and it was agreed as a part-time position at the time, and I've gone back to those minutes, that he also temporarily take over as HRA chair. And that lasted more than eight years. And that became for him a kind of troubling position. It was too much, it was too much. The position as city administrator is a full, full job. And we're in the midst of dramatic change and positive growth for the city with Vision 2020. We're at the cusp of something really dramatic. And I think the right type of energized, no lazy bones administrator will really be the right person that we need for the position of this job, and thank you, I'm going to sit down.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anybody else that wish to address council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, then under awards and recognitions, we have a couple of things. 3A? Oh, convention and, oh, I'm sorry, Convention and Visitor Bureau Annual Report, I was just switching them around. So Nancy, Nancy Schnebel is here, she is our still relatively new director of the Visitors Center.
You were trying to skip me, weren't you?
This is your first report, well, I was, there's two things, and I guess I just had Bob on my mind, so I thought I'd show you. I let him show you how it was done, since he's been here before.
Sounds good, thanks so much. As the agenda said, I'm Nancy, I am the new director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, so thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to give you a real brief summary of 2013 and do some highlights for our success plan in 2014. So believe you got the annual report in your packets?
Yep, we do.
Perfect, if you just want to open up to the front page, a real quick summary is that 2013 was a very prosperous year for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Couple highlights, social media is getting a lot bigger and year over year, we had an increase of over 23% of people that were following us and interested on social media, which is through Twitter and Facebook is our main mediums for that. As in past years, we've had over 100 tour and travel groups that have made Austin the destination for their trip, and 2013 was no different, we had 121 of them. But our real measure of success that we use is our city lodging tax revenue, and year over year, we had an increase of over 8%. So ultimately, what that means is that more people are staying in the city of Austin overnight. And when they stay overnight, typically they do more dining, they so stop at the retail shops and they visit some of the attractions. Which ultimately, the goal for us is to enhance the economy and in the community, and with the increase in lodging tax, we feel that we are doing that. So, short and sweet, but is there any more questions on our 2013 annual report before we go on to the success plan for 2014?
Oh, just good job.
Thank you. All right, now I think in front of you, we also put this new magazine. And that wasn't in a packet because this is our shining star so far this year. So you'll see all the little tabs on there. There are eight little tabs on there because this was published in 2014, came out in January. It is the Minnesota Travel Planner. And out of just over 100 pages, eight of them highlight different things happening in Austin, so we're pretty proud of that. Along with that, we are also doing some promotions to the Chicago area. Our goal for that is for them, when they're heading over to Sturgis, that they will make Austin a destination to stop and visit. Another market that we're targeting is the military market, hoping that they can have some reunions here in Austin. And we're doing that through mediums of the Veterans View and direct mailing pieces. We have a heavy focus going on right now in Mason City and La Crosse, that is primarily for the leisure travelers to become visitors of Austin. And in August, we will be focusing on agriculture industry as we will be exhibiting at Farm Fest. And throughout the year, we are doing different trade shows, direct mailing pieces for the corporate and association market to bring in conventions and conferences. So, we got a busy year planned, but as always, we appreciate the locals to any events or organizations that they're part of, if they want to bring them to Austin, we can help with that, too.
Nancy, can you make a couple comments on the B-BAM, is that?
BAM, yes, biking around Minnesota, we put a proposal together for that last year. We were awarded that proposal, that will be about 300 bikers, pedal bikers, that will be coming into Austin August 16th and 17th. And they will be utilizing the fairgrounds for some camping, some hotels. Some of the service clubs will be doing a fundraiser out there, they'll be doing some of the attractions and obviously some of the retail. So it'll be about 300 people that are coming in for that event. And then in the morning, they eat and then they pedal back to Peterson, I believe it is.
That's the event that's been taking place at Todd Park?
No, no, this is the first time that we've ever been awarded this one. So it's very similar to that one, just on a smaller scale. Yes, that was MS.
And then also, there was an article not very long ago in the Minneapolis Star Tribune that featured Austin, I think in their travel section.
Correct.
Was that?
Yeah, we knew about, we knew about that. What we did on that one is we kind of took the backseat approach, we let them know about Austin and then they did their own research. And it was a pretty good article, if you didn't have a chance to look at that, it's actually on our website, so you can view that as well. And then we have been working with some of the magazines up in the Twin Cities area as well to feature some of our local restaurants, too. So some of you may have seen the ones that have come out on Old Mill, and in June, there'll be more coming out as well, so stay tuned for that one.
Okay, is that it?
That's all I got, you got any questions?
I'd just like to, again, kind of congratulate Nancy and say thanks for coming to Austin, she's done a great, great deal of good for the CVB on what a year that you've been here.
Not quite.
June will be a year, June or July.
End of June, yeah.
And it looks like a pretty good board, except for maybe one weakness in John Wright, is that true? John Wright's probably the only weakness.
I think I have to plead the fifth on that one. No, I have a very supportive board, so.
And John's our new chair, he's in the audience tonight, too, so, Chair of the CVB, thank you.
All right, well, thank you Nancy. And now we come to Mr. Rozell. Why don't you give me a second, I'll read the proclamation, and well, you can just come on up there, but if I sit too long, I won't get up again, so. We do this every year, how many years has it been?
Uh, this is actually, will be the seventh year we've done this.
Whereas every year, the local National Association of Letter Carriers holds a national food drive. And whereas, to add to the effort, the Austin letter carriers are once again challenging the Albert Lee letter carriers to a friendly competition. And whereas citizens are urged to place non-perishable foods and some household items next to their mailboxes on Saturday, May 10th. And whereas the benefit of this food drive will be entirely local. Now therefore, I Thomas H. Dean, Mayor of the City of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby challenge Albert Lee Mayor Vern Rasmussen and the Albert Lee letter carriers to a friendly food drive competition and do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 10th, 2014 as Letter Carrier Food Drive Day. And I urge all citizens in Austin to participate in this worthy event.
And I thank you and the council for coming on board for this every, every year for the last seven years. And it's been very close, these competitions. And I think the best thing that's happened from it is that both Albert Lee and Austin, the food shelves have been the beneficiaries of increased donations, just from the greater awareness that this little friendly, you know, kind of rivalry has created. I think in Austin, anyway, we've averaged 2,500 more pounds every year since we've started this. So irregardless of how it turns out every year, whether we out-collect them or they out-collect us, the real beneficiaries have been the food shelves and the people who need this food. And if I could somehow let the entire community and region know how important it is to donate food, I would, I would do so. I think there is occasionally the idea that, you know, it's really not a problem here, and it's certainly not a problem the way we see it on television programs and in the National Geographic with, you know, starvation. But nutritional needs are important, and particularly with kids in school, it reflects in their schoolwork if they don't get the proper nutrition. And we all know the demographics of Mauer County and how it's heavily elderly in some places. And the elderly are struggling, too, in many ways, to, you know, medications, rent, car, insurance, food, what's the first thing to go? It's usually, well, I'll skip a meal or I'll, I'll skim on a meal. So, on Saturday, the 10th, we've been doing another food drive during the course of the week. Nearly everybody in the county should be getting one of these cards delivered. And we do have bags this year. My only concern with the bags, we have to go with grocery stores, chains that are willing to pay for these things, and it kind of rotates. This year, it's Cub Foods, and I know we don't have one. But they do have the stamp out hunger symbol on one side, they will have Cub Foods on the other. My biggest concern, and it did happen a little bit last year. So if anybody ever talks to any of you about the food drive or whatever, as you said in the proclamation, the food stays here. Some people were under the impression that all the food collected in Austin will go to Channel 1 in Rochester, not true. Rochester's food drive will go to Channel 1 in Rochester, but Austin's will stay in Austin, Albert Lee's will stay in Albert Lee's. And every one of the communities in Mauer County that are on board, and I think there's six of them, will stay in those communities. So if I, if I can emphasize that just a little bit more, I would do so.
And we do a number of food drives every year, I mean, in the city, and I think all of them stay right there.
Yeah, as far as I know, they all do.
And there's like two or three of them at least, so.
And this, this one's just one of many, and we've had very generous citizens and I thank them for the generosity.
And you must have been doing pretty good, because I think the Albert Lee mayor's been over here last year for sure, and maybe.
That was two years ago, we've, we've taken them twice, they've taken us four times. Darn it.
Bob, can you explain quickly, I think if people are not going to be in town or if they prefer to deliver it, can they bring it to the post office?
Oh, absolutely, they can bring it to the post office. I had someone from the Austin Herald ask me today, can they set it out anytime this week? Absolutely, I mean, we know what's going on as carriers. We see a bag of food near the mailbox, we're going to take it today, tomorrow, Friday, Saturday, Monday. John has been very generous out at the radio station to help us with publicity, and he's kind of kept the word going, so we'll take it whenever.
Okay, great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And thank you all, appreciate it.
With that, item number five is a motion for the consent agenda with the addition.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number six is a resolution receiving bids for state aid asphalt street reconstruction project 1A14, 8th Avenue Southwest, 12th Street to 18th Street. Mr. Lang?
This roadway is located on the south side of the fairgrounds, and we received bids on April 29th for this project. We had three bidders. Work on this project will consist of replacement of the asphalt pavement, curb and gutter, and complete roadway reconstruction along with some underground utility replacement. It will be phased in two separate phases to incorporate the fairgrounds being right in between, so one phase will occur ahead of the fair and the other phase will occur after the fair. And we had three bidders on this project with Yulin Brothers being the low bidder at $729,205.45, and we recommend awarding the bid to Yulin Brothers.
Counsel, any questions or comments? If there are none, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Bowden. Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven is a resolution receiving bids for state aid asphalt street mill and overlay project 7A13, 8th Street Northwest, 17th Avenue to 18th Avenue, and 17th Avenue Northwest, 4th Street to 8th Street. Mr. Lang?
The area that you described there is out by Holiday Inn, Uzums and Hy-Vee. This project is considered a maintenance project, we'll be milling and overlaying the existing pavement. And as part of the project, we will be adding sidewalk to the south side of 17th Avenue. We had one bidder on this project, again, this was Yulin Brothers, in the amount of $167,106.40. This project will be funded using state aid funds and Local Fund 49, we'd recommend awarding the project.
Counsel, anything?
Judy and I have talked, I think we're going to talk about the same thing, I think we've all gotten letters from Mr. Sherman at Uzums. You know, it seems to be the, as projects go, anytime you plan to put a sidewalk where a sidewalk hasn't been, it becomes a big issue. And it appears to Mr. Sherman at Uzums, and as well as he's, he's speaking for them, I haven't heard anything directly, but Torgerson Properties, I think they own both Perkins and Holiday Inn, they're not in.
But both of the days in?
Days Inn is also opposed, they're opposed?
No, well, they're, they're together, Torgerson Property is also.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that there's some opposition on that sidewalk, as per usual. And I guess at this point, until we kind of either hear them out, I'd like to see the project go through with the mill and overlay, but I'm, I'm just not certain about the sidewalk and the timing of that.
And Mr. Sherman's planning to be at the work session today.
Can you, can I just comment on that for Mr. King? We have heard a very willing participant in the Torgerson Properties. To my knowledge, the only person concerned about it is the Uzums property. In addition, we, as part of the Hy-Vee project that is going to happen this summer, part of their agreement to build on that site, they will be adding sidewalk to the, to their side of A Street. So it will, it will connect this loop that we are creating from 17th Avenue. The A Street portion will be installed by Hy-Vee as part of their project at their cost.
Well, at least I think we should put that sidewalk in kind of abeyance right now until we hear more of Mr. Sherman's plan on coming to the work session tonight.
Is that a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve everything without the sidewalk at this point, not to say we might revisit it anyway, but everything that's in the, in the resolution aside from the sidewalk.
I'll second that.
Just, if I may make a comment, the bid was awarded on the entirety of the project, so if you want to stop it, you're going to have to table it because, or you're going to have to have it rebid, because the bid was made on the entirety of the project, so you cannot.
Well, then I'd have to make the motion that we table it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Motion by Councilmember King, second by Councilmember Enright, to table the motion, table the project for now, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Jordal.
Nay.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Nay.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-2, Your Honor.
Thank you. We can, I, well, we'll, we'll listen to them at the work session and decide then, obviously. Okay, eight is a, I believe it's a resolution receiving bids for asphalt street reconstruction project, project 6A13, Kaufman Park area, 9th Avenue Southeast, abandoned railroad to 8th Street, 10th Avenue Southeast, abandoned railroad. Hang on. 8th Street, 11th Avenue Southeast, abandoned railroad to 8th Street, 6th Street Southeast, 8th Avenue to 10th Avenue, and 7th Street Southeast, 8th Avenue to 11th Avenue. Mr. Lang?
The area you described there is directly west of the Kaufman Park area in the southeast part of Austin. This is a residential area that will involve complete roadway reconstruction, including some underground utility replacement. We received two bids on this project, those bids were opened on May 1st, with Yulin Brothers being the low bidder at $1,194,978.50. This is a local project, so it will involve Local Fund 49, which is our capital improvement fund, wastewater treatment plant, and also stormwater funds will be used to fund this project.
Counsel, anything? If there is none, no questions, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution. Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine, resolution receiving bids for the animal control building. Mr. Lang?
Last week, we completed the closing on this property, so the next step, as I've detailed previously at, at work session, is to award the project, and we, back on March 13th, we received seven bids for this project, very competitive bidding for the animal control building. Will involve the construction of a 2,320 square foot building for the Police Department to, to house those animals at a, with Joseph Construction being the low bidder at $265,000. And I would recommend awarding the bid to the Joseph Company.
Any questions, counsel, comments? If there are none, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin. Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. Under petition and request, 10 is a resolution affirming participation in the state, in the office of the State Auditor's voluntary 2014 Performance Measurement Program. Mr. Dankert.
Anyway, the city of Austin has participated in a state program that allows us to get an extra $4,000 to $5,000 of local government aid by putting a survey out there, and in the past, we use Survey Monkey for the citizenry to respond based on how is the city department's doing in relation to those specific questions. Once again, we've put it out there, I mean, there's some questions, for example, regarding transit services, and that we'd probably want to take away. But in essence, this is just a request for counsel to ask, to have you allow us to go out and use Survey Monkey again to survey the citizenry on some of these topics.
Counsel? There's no, no questions, we need a resolution for item number 10.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Jeremy.
Did somebody say?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Jeremy. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 11 is a resolution authorizing the modification of the Alumilite loan. Mr. Dankert?
As was discussed at the last work session, we brought forward a request or a proposal to re-amortize the $100,000 loan that had been made to Alumilite, Alumilite back in 2012. And they've got some additional funding, and by doing this, it will allow them to start making their product and start making payments to us. Nothing was forgiven, it's just taking the loan and scheduling out over a different period of time.
Questions, comments? If there are none, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12 is a motion authorizing the city of Austin to become a member of the National Joint Powers Alliance. Kim?
Mayor, um, yes, at our last work session, we talked about the NJPA. It is an alliance that we can purchase equipment, much like the state bid contract, where you don't have to go through for specifications, they have already done all that for you. And in essence, then, things are less expensive because they've already done all that. So I'd like you to approve that.
Okay. Anybody, questions, comments? If there are none, we need a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 13 is a motion authorizing the city of Austin to become a member of HGACB. Chief?
Similar to the National Joint Powers Alliance, the bidding is done for us on the HGAC, allowing us to save money on our purchases.
Questions, comments? If not, we need, we need a motion.
So move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 14 is a motion modifying the 2014 capital improvement budget for the Park and Recreation Department to reallocate $8,000 for a skid loader blade toward purchasing trucks and a stump grinder. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. So as we spoke last month, or last meeting about purchasing alliance, they offer equipment such as stump grinders that we can't find on state bid, and that is why we went further to look for alliances like that. And so when we went in to do our bidding process, we have found that stump grinders are more expensive than we actually budgeted for. So I'd like to take that $8,000, put it towards the stump grinder so we can replace that piece of equipment and then later, put the other blade back in.
Counsel, any questions, comments? We talked about this, then we need a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 15 is a motion authorizing the hiring of a city administrator. Once again, we did talk about, any questions on this? If not, we need a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 16 is a resolution authorizing funding the paperless council agenda and proposal from general fund contingency with the replacement televisions coming from cable access peg fees. Ann?
Uh, this was also discussed at the work session last time. This is one of the 2014 council goals, to go paperless with the agenda, so I would request you authorize the funding for the software and the iPads, and then also for the replacement televisions.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Jordal.
Nay.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson. Resolution passes 5-1, Your Honor.
Thank you. 17 is a motion approving a street closing request from Bobby Joe's for street dances on June 28th, July 26th, and August 30th. It should be self-apparent, anybody, anybody have any questions on that? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 18 is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of refuse junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following properties. A is 1108 2nd Avenue Northwest, the Ernst property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 611 11th Avenue Northwest, JS2 Properties.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? C, 802 2nd Avenue Southwest, the Corfridge property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, D, 904 Southwest Ruble property, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 19 is a resolution accepting donations for the city of Austin. Says Kim and Tom, Tom?
These are just donations that have been received during the last period. Park and Rec received $500, and we received $45 towards flower donations.
Kim? Same thing? Okay, any questions? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Jeremy already did.
Councilmember Jordal.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 20 is a motion authorizing the sale of Austin Police Department surplus property. 15 Motorola 1500 VHF radios. Chief? Yes, Your Honor, these radios came out of our squad cars, they were councils in all of our marked squads and unmarked squads. We have replaced them with the 800 megahertz system so that those are all operating in our squad cars, so we have these old.
our squad cars, so we have these old VHF radios, and we're looking to sell them, hopefully $200 apiece, and possibly have a city department in Wisconsin that's interested in them.
Counsel, any questions? Comments? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 21 is a motion approving an event application for the Austin Haitian Hustle on June 28, 2014. Any questions on this?
What is it?
I don't know. That's your answer, Tom? Do we have any information?
It's a run.
It's a run?
Okay.
Okay. So they hustle? Okay. Okay. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 22 is a motion in support of bonding bill SF2652 to appropriate funds for Mighty Ducks Grant to improve indoor air quality and eliminate R22 refrigerant and ice facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. They're going through a bonding bills session right now, and R22 is the free end that we use in the arenas, well, in Riverside Arena. The older arenas in the state of Minnesota, there are several that are running through this, R22. This letter is just for support and hoping that the council would also send that. I did send a note to Senator Sparks, and I believe Janet did as well, and to Jean Poppy. So a letter coming from your support as well would be helpful for the bonding session.
Right. And Dan, Sparks did indicate that that would be helpful. The only, I only have one question, is that, is that SF2652, is that only the Senate bill? Do we have to put a different number in for the House?
When I looked out there, I'm not sure that the House bill was through yet with the number. I mean, I know that the Senate bill is.
I mean, they'll know what we're talking about, but I just...
I would think so.
Yeah, yeah. I just was curious about if there was a different number we needed to insert for the House, for Jean's.
Question circuit, research.